But it did pass, and I think we need to keep faith with the voters. What we did do after we overcame this initial push to ban and said, “No, let’s study it.” We created the task force. We brought people from the industry in. I grew up in the 70s, but I didn’t know anything about growing pot, nor do I know anything about medical marijuana. So we studied it. We brought people in from those industries so we could know what we were regulating. And I think that’s very important. We had a series of hearings. We came up with some regulations. We vetted those. We had public discussions. We created a task force. There were efforts to push back and ban all along the way. You may recall, I think there was a vote at the county level or the city level. The reactionaries who want to ban will continue to push, but I’m proud to say the city never went that way, and this council never went that way. So I would just say to you, take a deep breath and resist the temptation to do with it. If I had one message today, it would be deal with it. Deal with it. Marijuana is in this community. It’s been in this community for decades, and it’s not going to not be in this community because you decide not to deal with what the voters handed you. It’s here, and the question is, is it going to be a black market activity that’s not taxable, that’s not monitorable, that’s not controllable at any rate? Or are we going to deal with it like mature adults and bring it out into the open and deal with it? I say, on balance, given the failures that the prohibition model has brought to this country, that it’s time to deal with it. Doesn’t make me an advocate for free drug use. It just says, “Let’s deal with it.” The voters certainly want us to, and I think you should. So resist reactionary voters, you know, I mean voices. You know, it’s so rare in the land of the free that we actually see an expansion of liberty. It really is. Most politicians, what are they doing? They’re passing rules and regulations that contract people’s liberty because they don’t trust people to make the right choices. Here, in a rare instance, you have an actual expansion of liberty. I know it makes people uncomfortable. I know it makes people scared. I know it complicates the conversations that we have to have with our children. I’m a stepfather. I have those same concerns as a stepfather. Do we want to send the right message? Fact of the matter is, kids aren’t getting their messages from us. They’re not going to become potheads because of what we do here today. Drugs are in their schools. The biggest source of marijuana is not a medical marijuana dispensary, or it won’t be one of these places. It’s the locker in the school where your kid goes, or it’s in your medicine cabinet where they’re pilfering your pills. So, I think we just need to deal with it. We did it as a task force. I would urge you to go back over that process. We could revisit that process. I think it would be great. You know, the public was fully involved. We moved through it. We came up with some reasonable regulations that struck a balance. That’s what we’re trying to do here. We’re trying to strike a balance between rights, in this case now constitutional rights, and legitimate public concern, some of them legitimate more than others, and that’s what you have to do. So I would just urge you, please, we don’t have to reinvent the wheel. The city’s been this way before. We’ve dealt with it. We went through a scary situation. None of the scary stories that were told when I came on council have come to pass. And I think if we can look back on this three years from now, or two years from now, we’ll see that we can deal with it. Colorado Springs has a reputation as being this kind of tight-ass conservative community that can’t deal with anything and isn’t very progressive.
Sean.
Well, but the truth is—
No, no, your seven minutes are up.
I know. But—
Please, everyone.
But I’m proud to say—
Sean, please, I’m sorry. We’re going to hold real tight to the time restrictions tonight, but thank you for coming.
Okay. Please just deal with it.
And I just once again want to say to everybody, please, no demonstrations. We’re going to try to get through this as quickly as we can tonight. Next up is a medical marijuana business owner. His name is Don McKay.
That’s me.
Don, thank you for being here. And following Don will be representing from the Colorado Springs Medical Cannabis Council, Charles Houghton.
Do we have a PowerPoint we could put up? I’ll get that up there. While she’s working on that, I’d like to thank President King, council members, for giving me the time to come and talk to you. To bring this into the open, like Sean said, marijuana’s been here ever since prohibition in 1937. It’s not going anywhere. It’s always going to be here. It’s just a matter of what it is, how we’re going to deal with it. Okay. All right. So today, we’re considering making our marijuana decision. Do we want to regulate it, or do we not want to allow things to continue working through the black market and the underground as they are right now? If you run it through the black market where things are going, there’s no rules, no management, no taxes. We’re paying the payroll for cartels, for gangs. Marijuana comes across the border from Mexico and bails. The money goes back across the border in shoeboxes. It doesn’t stay in town. The parks are open for business. That’s their storefront. Millions of dollars that could be staying in the local community are being boxed up and shipped off to another country. Anybody that is growing locally, selling into the black market, their grows are uninspected, and they can sell to anybody that has money to give to them. If we decide that we want to regulate the marijuana, we can define the rules. We can say where the stores are going to be, who’s going to be selling it, who’s able to purchase it. Sales taxes, special taxes will be redeemed. We’re generating jobs for local residents, which is extremely important at this point. And we provide a means for local development. There’s been a lot of warehouses. When the medical marijuana businesses came online, a lot of these warehouses were looking for foreclosure. They’ve been brought up to spec. They have a certificate of occupancy now, and they’re fully compliant with all the construction rules. We can put millions of dollars into the local economy. The black market here is huge. I mean, medical marijuana dispensaries as they are right now, we’re pumping a million dollars just strictly in sales taxes for medical marijuana. The market for recreational marijuana can be up to five times that. So only in the sales tax alone, we’re looking at a quadrupling or quintupling of just the sales tax portion of it, without even considering any additional special taxes or anything else. Let’s see, let me get to the next slide. I only got seven minutes to get through it. This is a—everybody knows the state passed Amendment 64. Manitou Springs, there’s no shocker, 67% of the citizens there. Green Mountain Falls, Palmer Lake, Fountain, Rama, and Colorado Springs, it passed in Colorado Springs by 5,000 votes. You can see down at the bottom, 55% of the citizens in the state voted for it. That’s more than voted our current president in. Over on the right side of the screen is the hash marks are the city of Colorado Springs boundaries. And you can see the blue and dark blue areas represented there are areas that passed medical marijuana, or the recreational marijuana. Interesting to note, up at the top, Area 200 in the upper right there, that’s the Air Force Academy. Air Force Academy, it passed. If you look down at the bottom, between Highway 115 and Interstate 25, that’s Fort Carson. It passed there. Not shown off to the right-hand side of the screen, there’s a big blue square where Peterson Air Force Base is. So for some reason, the military is voting it in. All right. So, as we have it now, for those that don’t believe we have a black market, I went onto Craigslist on Monday, and I pulled down these following ads on Craigslist. Okay? Says, “Oh my God, free medical marijuana, 21 years or older, red card, $35. Go pick it up. It’s free, but it costs you $35. Local caregiver giving dank gifts of MMJ weed, med, pot, free legally, $25.” The one that concerns me the most is the one in the upper right-hand corner there. It says, “I have $550 for QPs all day long.” To translate that, you can buy a quarter pound of marijuana if you give me $550. We don’t care who you are. That’s happening right now. It’s on Craigslist. This is what it is now. Down at the bottom, the guy shows his pictures, says, “A friend with weed is a friend indeed.” I mean, if you dialed up the phone numbers right there, call them up, maybe they can deliver right down here to the meeting. So that’s what the black market looks like. If you have medical marijuana, or retail medical, retail marijuana facilities, you see the big sign right there in the dispensary? It says, “We ID everybody.” Anybody that comes into the shop gets an ID. You can choose who you want to sell to if you want to put restrictions in place. And importantly, down below it, there’s a point-of-sale system. Every gram is tracked from seed to sale. So you know where it’s being grown. You know where it’s going. Let’s see. Let’s talk about our parks and our visitors. Everybody’s concerned about our visitors. When I go to a new place, I don’t know anything about it, I go to TripAdvisor. I pull up and see what other people have to say about the community, or the resort, or whatever it is. So you go to Colorado Springs, what’s it say there? Acacia Park, not a place for kids. Drug deals. Monument Valley Park, drugs, cops, drug busts. This is what’s happening. I mean, nobody’s been able to stop marijuana in 80 years of trying to stop it. What we need to do is regulate marijuana sales out of our parks and into our local dispensaries. Oops. Go the right direction. Okay. Safety is a concern. If you look in the yellow box there, an unregulated grow, the top one is an unventilated house. They get too much humidity, a lot of mold, dangerous marijuana, and it’s not healthy for anybody. We’re concerned about fires these days. Look at the wiring jobs. It’s pretty simple what’s going on there. Not all the grows look like that, but these are pictures of grows. If you want to regulate it, all of the plans, all of the documentation for the centers goes through regional building and development. Plans are approved. Things are designed by engineers. I paid $8,000 this morning to a local engineer to make plans on a new building. So that’s money going into our local community. And then all of the development supports licensed contractors. These guys are hungry. They’re looking for work. And if they’re building out marijuana centers, they’re putting food on the table. Taxes and revenue. Money makes the world go around. If you have unregulated sales, nobody’s reporting the income, creating jobs in the black market. Nobody’s paying contractors for construction. The money is supporting our gangs. Cartels can import marijuana. It comes in and bails. The money goes back in shoeboxes across the border down south. It doesn’t stay here. If we regulate it, we can increase the sales taxes. We can build more jobs. I’ve currently got 13 formerly unemployed people working in my shop. With recreational marijuana coming online, we would probably at least double that, and that would be the same for any other shops that participated. Local businesses are supported. There’s $40 million in the state level. It’s pending approval on the taxes.
Mr. McKay, I’m afraid your time is up.
Can I give you one last statement? 10 seconds.
No, not even 10 seconds. I’m going to really hold to this tonight, but you certainly can send us a copy of your presentation.
Yeah, you should have a copy of this, and I’ve also provided each of you with a book as well that you can read. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, next we have Charles Houghton from the Colorado Springs Medical Cannabis Council, and he will be followed by Mr. Don Kidd from the Military Affairs Council.
Eight years, and I’ve practiced all 28 years here in Colorado Springs here. I live here. I pay taxes here. I do not use marijuana recreationally, and I don’t use it as a patient. Thank God I don’t need it. The other is a lifestyle choice. But I do represent the businesses that do sell it. Not all of the businesses in the Colorado Springs Medical Cannabis Council were in favor of Amendment 64. I certainly voted against it personally for a lot of different reasons, but I’m also a realist. I’ve been an attorney for a long time, and if all of my clients would call me ahead of time and ask my opinion on what to do, I would be out of business in a week. We are faced with what we are faced with. I will mirror what the councilman said, and that is, is that we have to deal with it. And the black market is real. It is present, and there’s nothing that we can do about it unless you guys become the architects of your own destiny. And in order to do that, you’re going to have to put in a regulatory scheme that prevents or provides a significant disincentive for the black market to exist. In short, you’ve got to outsmart the bad guys. And how do you do that? You do it through effective regulation. You make it so that marijuana, it’s going to be here whether we like it or not, so that it’s regulated in such a way that it’s much easier to go down to a store that’s regulated and buy it than it is to grow it. It’s easier to buy it in a store than it is to go down to the park and purchase it. It’s been vetted. The people who sell it have been investigated. This is the most highly regulated industry in the world, as far as I can tell. And what we’ve seen is, is that every one of my clients, when they ask for advice, they don’t ask for advice on how do I get around the rules? They ask, “How do I comply?” These people are dying to comply with the rules that you put in place. Every time I have an interaction with them, it’s, “How do we get back in line here? Or can we do this? Is this allowed?” And they ask me ahead of time for that because the penalties for not following this aren’t, “Well, we maybe will go out of business,” or something like that. These people could go to jail. And I think that what we’ve seen is, we don’t know what will happen with retail marijuana. There’s no question about that. Anybody that’s got that kind of a crystal ball is probably not telling the truth. But we can look and see what’s happened with other industries. Gaming industry, what did we see? We saw the potential for a lot of graft, corruption, drugs, money being moved around that wasn’t supposed to be moved around. None of it happened. Why? Effective regulation. And the people that were in the industry were willing to follow the rules. What did we also see with gaming? We saw a proliferation of casinos, and then a gradual decline in the number of casinos until the supply meets the demand. I know that one of the concerns is, what’s going to happen with retailers? Are there going to be another explosion? Maybe. Depends on what rules you put in. If you limit the number, then no, there’s not going to be an explosion. If you don’t limit the number, I can tell you what’s going to happen, I think, and that is, is that there’s going to be a proliferation of them, and then there’s going to be a gradual decline as people realize that this is a business like any other. It survives on supply and demand. And if there’s not a demand for it, then people go out of business. The entry, the cost of entry these days is exceptionally high because you have to have your own grow. So, you know, what used to be a mom-and-pop operation now costs $200,000, $300,000 to get into it. And these people have invested their lives in this. There’s no institutional lender that’s lent them any money. They’re doing this all on their own. They are entrepreneurs with a capital E, and they have proven themselves over the last three years to be the best corporate citizens that this city has to offer. They follow the rules. They don’t cause problems. They don’t raise a big stink. They don’t go beating their chests. They simply pay their taxes. They serve their customers, and they move on. And that’s the kind of thing that you can do if you put in favorable recommendations. Without the regulations, or if you just decide to ban it, you are just inviting the corruption to come in. Let’s fix it before it gets started. Let’s make sure that these people have an opportunity to prove to you once again that they’re the best corporate citizens you’ll ever see. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the reminder that we don’t all need to fill our full seven minutes if we can say what we need to in a shorter time. Next is Mr. Don Kidd from the Military Affairs Council, and he will be followed by General Ed Anderson, Colorado National Defense Support Council.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Council members, appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today. I’m going to take a slightly different approach to this than you’ve heard in previous speakers. It’s clear the majority of voting Coloradans voted to allow the use of recreational marijuana. Military Affairs Council does not refute that fact, nor would we ever stand in the way of the will of the people. But it’s for the good of the people that we stand here and oppose legalizing the sale of marijuana in Colorado Springs. Voters also gave our community and every other community the option to opt out of Amendment 64, and we urge you to do that.
And the futures of young people. Impacts whether or not they’ll get a college scholarship. Impacts whether or not they can be gainfully employed. Impacts their very future. So in the name of social justice, we said that decriminalizing marijuana was a civil rights issue, and that we would work as hard as we could to ensure that Colorado would agree. And it did. And it did. And it did, and we made history. And we’ve also made history, I think, by the way that our courageous governor has led the establishment of regulations, all manner of procedures, some of which I participated in, and I’m still trying to understand in some ways. So detailed, such regulation, so that any problems that might come up would be diminished in the forefront. So I’m standing here today on a day that’s a tough day. It’s been a long day. It’s been a long week, to let you know that the NAACP State Conference urges the Colorado Springs City Council to move forward in taking all the time that it needs to study this issue. Taking all the time that it needs to learn as much as it can, but to move forward decisively to uphold the will of the people. And we have two primary observations in urging you to move decisively towards establishing marijuana retail sales in this city and to not opt out. So two primary observations. We want to just say that disallowing retail marijuana businesses in this city will not mean that people will not smoke marijuana in this city. The residents of this city will either, one, simply go to other cities and towns where they have had the foresight to establish retail sales, and they’ll take their money and the resulting tax revenues with them to those other cities and towns, which will become, you know, bigger and better and fatter than we in regard to this particular segment of our business community. And there’s something else. Disallowing marijuana sales will not mean that people who can now use it legally and grow it won’t do so. It will only mean that people will grow in their basements where the marijuana will not be regulated, where there will not be all these policies that we’ve put in place because it’s legal for them to do so. And the NAACP believes, as a community partner, as one that cares about wellness and health as a game changer, that those who want to use this drug, just as those who want to use alcohol, should do so under the safest guidelines and regulations possible. To have it available, to have it regulated, to have it safe, with a limited number of wholesale cultivation facilities, a limited number of wholesale facilities that meet really strict standards and are really tightly regulated, and where there’s so much oversight that no one would dare, if they wanted to smoke, as people want to drink, smoke the marijuana from someone’s basement or spare room. We’d have stores where we would know what’s there because of the regulations. In addition, the NAACP too, I want you to say, I want you to know, is critically concerned, given our health changer initiative, about this idea of having, of children having access to marijuana retail sales. But we know that there is not yet one single documented case of a minor being sold marijuana in any of the state’s medical marijuana facilities. Not one. Not one documented case. I would challenge you to show us one. Like the medical marijuana industry itself, from its start, I think recreational sales, these stores will be run by businesspeople who have invested strongly and heavily in their businesses and who are not going to risk that investment for some quick sale to a kid. I just don’t think that will happen. My time might be growing short, but I want to bring to your attention a report that I will send along to staff for you.
Rosemary, I am so sorry.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Martin. Please do not opt out. We ask that you move forward with retail sales.
We really appreciate you being here tonight. Please, everyone. I will have to ask that you be removed if we cannot respect everyone’s time and presentations. All right. Next is Alicia McConnell from the Colorado Springs Convention and Visitors Bureau. And you weren’t clapping, were you, Alicia?
No, I took the fifth there.
Good. Listen, you will be followed by Dave Anderson from the Multi Duty Manufacturing—
Just want to say thank you very much to the entire city council for the efforts you’re doing to take this very seriously and listening to everyone from all sides of the issue. So I’m here representing the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I have a handout for you. So I just want to be really clear that the Colorado Springs Convention and Visitors Bureau will continue to promote our brand platform of being a rugged, vibrant, exceptional, and alive community. That’s really what we’re focused on. The CVB’s two main leisure travel audiences are families of all types and outdoor adventure enthusiasts. We will continue to speak to these two audiences with our marketing dollars. Promoting marijuana tourism does not necessarily promote those two markets—I’m sorry, complement those two markets. The Governor’s Office and Attorney General are working with the Department of Justice and the U.S. Attorney to identify and understand the federal government’s position. There are many uncertainties and issues to be resolved surrounding Amendment 64. Therefore, it is difficult for the CVB or state tourism office to make any comments or predictions on how this issue will ultimately impact Colorado’s tourism industry. If marijuana retail stores open, the CVB will have to seriously consider whether to make available the marketing partnerships to these businesses because we want to maintain our outdoor, active, and family-friendly image and messaging. The important thing to stress to visitors is that marijuana is not immediately legal or decriminalized in Colorado because of the passing of Amendment 64. The region is home to more than 50—
The ability to anticipate and lead change is what I believe has distinguished the communities that are at the top of that economic vitality list. And the topic that you have before you today is one of those opportunities to distinguish the direction that you lead us in. Now, I’ve worked diligently on a local as well as a national level to staunch the erosion of goods production in our economy. Here, from a really healthy 15-plus percent in 2001 to now, what I understand is less than 5% here. The kind of manufacturing operation that we run at Multi Duty Manufacturing is intellectual property-based, and we’ve struggled as much as anybody to survive the economic downturn. We have the highest prices, and yet we still are able to offer the lowest total cost of ownership. The way we’ve contended with all of the issues that we’ve faced economically is by continually reinventing ourselves, thinking about where the market’s going, investing in the types of change that will keep us at the product forefront. We’re really committed to the community. We’re moving after 20 years into our own building very soon, and we believe that we’re the kind of business that we can cultivate properly, invest with, and attract more if we get the right kind of leadership and decision-making. Now, all of our permanent employees sign an agreement with us that obligates them to protect our intellectual property, but it also enables us to enforce strict, non-intoxicant requirements because all of our operating equipment involves rotating equipment, and our products do too. So we’re as concerned about safety and product quality as anybody possibly could be. But we’ve discussed the issues before you today as a management team, and we believe that we do not have any problems attracting the kind of people and maintaining the kind of growth that we expect to have by adopting realistic regulations that recognize and better manage what’s been prohibited in a failed 40-year and probably multi-trillion-dollar war on drugs. I’m also speaking as a parent with teenagers. And let me tell you that illicit recreational marijuana is very readily available in our community. Just ask around. Price is not considered an obstacle, and taxation, from what I can gather, is also likely not to be an obstacle to consumption, any more than it is with cigarettes. More disturbing to me, however, there is no consideration among those consumers for safety and no standard for content—and I mean toxicity—in black market transactions. Eliminating the black market is, for me, an essential step in gaining better control of product, as well as having standards against which to better regulate behavior. My point today did start with the fact that the community has economic constraints as serious as any around. It’s an unbalanced economy with 100,000 more people today than we had in 2001, and certainly no more jobs. I used to say it had 10,000 fewer. While there are many factors in that lack of balance, including international trade policy that puts our domestic producers at a very unenviable disadvantage, one thing for me is, again, very clear. It’s that resistance to change is the best way to end up with the weakest performance. The most certain way to assure performance is to assess the change that you face in the competitive environment and to take active steps to lead. In our pump business, we very purposefully engineer product change that puts us at the competitive forefront. In our community, it’s essential that we take those very purposeful steps to decide what change we’ll bring, and to be very active in remaking what we are, as well as how we’re perceived, to rebuild that economic base. We’ve got to do a lot more.
I am sorry, your time is up.
Thank you, Jen.
But thank you for being here tonight. Next, we have Mike Jorgensen, Tom Nepel from the Colorado—
In my retail business, we are very deliberate and work very hard to develop positive points of differentiation to set us apart from our competitors. We’re constantly developing our customer service experience, our employee experience, and our product offering to give us some competitive advantages in the very competitive environment of automotive retail. We are most careful that the changes we craft and the new programs we launch are positive points of differentiation for our customers, would-be customers, and our employees. points of differentiation for our customers, would-be customers, and our employees. In crafting business and economic development strategies for our region, the business alliance in our community must be ever vigilant that public policies create positive points of differentiation for our community. We're in a very competitive environment for business retention, business growth, and business attraction. And business growth, attraction, and retention all add up to jobs and opportunities for the citizens of our community. To be competitive, we must create positive points of differentiation. Positive points that will encourage businesses to expand and relocate here. In our view, allowing retail sales of marijuana is not a positive point of differentiation. We are competing with states that don't allow recreational use or retail sales of marijuana. That is a point of differentiation. Is it one that sets us positively apart from our competition? Here are some of the challenges that we're concerned about. And you've heard some of these, and I just want to go ahead and repeat a couple. The military--
Particularly for issues that are controversial and divisive, we support full public debate and discussion, including the placement of such issues on the ballot. And finally, should city council decide to permit the sales of recreational marijuana within the city limits, we strongly support a thousand-foot separation from other retail marijuana shops, residentially-used or residentially-zoned property, churches, daycare establishments, parks, educational institutions, and halfway houses and substance abuse rehabilitation or counseling facilities. Thank you. I think I haven't exceeded my time. I'd be pleased to answer any questions you have now or at any time in the future. And we look forward to continuing to be involved in your decision-making process.
Thank you, Dave. We appreciate your input. And I think I saw in the paper, it was just yesterday or this week, that the organization--
A unanimous decision by our Board of Directors, yes.
Thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Finally, our last speaker is Mark Slaw from I Comply. Now, we had told the speakers originally 10 minutes, and Mark has his presentation set up for 10 minutes. So, Mark, we're going to give you a little lead and see, you're our last speaker for 10 minutes, but please don't take advantage of us, okay?
You got it. I'll try to get there very quickly.
All right. Thank you.
Guys, wake up a little bit. Anybody need some coffee?
We're good luck.
Thank you very much. My name is Mark Slaw. I'm the Southern Colorado Regional Coordinator for Amendment 64, the campaign to regulate marijuana like alcohol. I was a student at UCCS. I've grown up here in Colorado Springs, went to Mitchell High School, got my degrees in international business and finance. And I look at this from a political, socioeconomic perspective. During Colorado's historic vote, we had record turnout come out and support regulation of marijuana. Three times on the ballot language, the language indicated that we wanted to regulate marijuana like alcohol. I'm not sure what's going on with this, Amy. Left click. Oh, there it goes. Sorry. Apologize. Let me get back.
You can scroll, Mark.
Oh, that's good to know. Thank you. Oh, boy.
Yeah, well--
All right. All right. Okay. So we had record turnout come out and decide here in Colorado, more votes than the president to end marijuana prohibition. It's been a failed federal policy. Since 1960s, we've followed this with the Pew Research Center on Public Sentiment. These are the voters that are going to elect you that recently decided on recent incumbents. And these voters nationwide are now swinging the other direction. The social paradigm has shifted with Amendment 64 and the initiative in Washington, and it's not going back the other way. Prohibition goes beyond the bounds of reason in that it attempts to control a man's appetite by legislation and makes crimes out of things that are not crimes. Abraham Lincoln put these wise words down years ago. Now, we should take the counsel of our forefathers in looking at alcohol prohibition, where Al Capone corrupted the cities of Chicago, Valentine's Day massacres were occurring, and we saw an epic failure of alcohol prohibition. Colorado Springs had 61 years of alcohol prohibition. Judge Baldwin fell down a well and died while he was drunk. There are secret tunnels running all throughout Old Colorado City and the Broadmoor, where people would rum-run and bootleg. It doesn't work. Just as we saw with alcohol prohibition, we're seeing casualties of war with marijuana, primarily against communities of color and disenfranchised people. Our Constitution, our rights, civil asset forfeiture, the ability for the government to take your private property if it's involved in the drug trade and auction it off. These laws have been very oppressive, and with over 2 million arrests nationwide and the majority of the drug war funds being spent on marijuana, the voters have decided to end it. There's been a lot of heavy lifting done shortly after the passage of Amendment 64 by the state government. And while you'll hear that the MED wasn't properly funded or that we're looking at certain issues with regard to overprojecting those revenues and a shrinking of the marketplace, the reality is, is that all of these concerns are being addressed. This program is revolutionary, and it's in its infant stages. As we go forward, I mean, with alcohol regulation, it still happens every year at the legislature, and that ended 80 years ago. So we're seeing the same thing here with marijuana, where every year you're going to have improvements to the system. You're going to have ways of ensuring that the model works because both businesses and government need it to. And so does the community. Let me explain to you what's going on currently. Right now, and for 60 years, the primary distribution and cultivation of marijuana has been handled by cartels. They process these things in poor conditions with substandard packaging. They distribute it along with other drugs like heroin, methamphetamine, crack cocaine, to local gangs, who then buy these things wholesale, recruit our children into gang membership, and redistribute it in our streets, retail, without any regulation. It was funny, I was in DC recently, and somebody was telling me a story that they went down to the park to try to find marijuana on the black market. And the guy was down there with a backpack, and he said, hey, man, do you know where I could find some bud? And the guy said, no, all I have is crack and coke. The weed guy left it eight. It's a gateway effect of prohibition. These cartels have an incentive to get people on drugs, to get them on harder drugs so that they have a recurring marketplace. And police are spending their time and resources doing investigations and interdictions, which to a large extent have not worked. We're seeing increased drug use in harder substances, and it's becoming increasingly more difficult when we're spending the majority of these drug revenue funds on marijuana to stop the harder substances. And we're footing the bill. Society pays billions every year in fighting a failing drug war. And on the other side, we're arresting our own American citizens in the country of the free, which, to date, has 25% of the world's imprisoned population in this country. One out of every four prisoners in the world is in this country, and the majority of those arrests are for simple marijuana possession. The atrocities happening in New York with Stop and Frisk Program. So you have these consumers that come out that are always going to be there. And as Don pointed to earlier, all of that money goes right back across the border, creates bigger problems for government, continues to spend more money, and empowers organized crime. And over 50% of the cartel profits derive from this illegal marijuana trade. This is what that looks like in your community. Fires in houses because of electrical systems. Amateur growers trying to produce their own supply with mold and mildew issues that are unsafe in the air to breathe. There's mortgagers putting warnings on their website on how to spot home grows in your neighborhood because it's decreasing property values. And this is how they're going out and selling these substances in our community. Legally, there's no way to sell marijuana without remuneration. That's the law under Amendment 64. And as you saw in Craigslist, that doesn't mean it doesn't happen. This creates a dangerous access of illicit clandestine trade that has no tax benefits and is a very expensive cost to society. If the fire departments want to talk about extra costs, maybe we should think about increasing that fire risk in our communities. If we want to talk about extra costs, we should think about the cost of police trying to identify who's legitimately growing and distributing marijuana from who is not. At least with a regulated market, that's very transparent. You have retail cultivation facilities that produce safe, quality products consistently with these regulations that test every product for mold and mildew to make sure that the potency's on there. You can't walk in a liquor store and buy a bottle of booze and not know the proof. What if we were buying bathtub hooch? If we were all producing our beer and wine at home if we didn't have liquor stores? I like beer. My point is, is that there are points of taxation in this model that can help cover the social costs. And one of those is what the voters want in funding schools at the wholesale level. 15% excise tax levied on wholesale transactions that are set by the Regulatory Division on the price. So these funds will go to building schools across Colorado. Right now, we're ranked 46th in per-child spending in education. We spend more money on private prisons in Colorado than we do on higher education. If UCCS wants to talk about that. We're backwards, guys. We're upside down. And we have an obligation as the second-largest city in Colorado, the second-largest marketplace for cannabis, to be able to fund these schools statewide. And of course, that goes to a retail store that has put us on the map. And there's no doubt about that. But tourism could be helped by this, or it could be hurt. Even they don't know the impact. I personally believe you have a different sect of tourism. You're an adventurer. You like hikes. Maybe you like cannabis. And there's nothing wrong with that anymore in Colorado. The reality is that retail stores are licensed, insured, brick-and-mortar, facilities providing safe access under secure conditions with surveillance, tracking. The point-of-sale tracking systems do track seat-to-sale within a company. Just because the state didn't get together doesn't mean the industry didn't. It's easy to regulate for law enforcement because you know where it is. And you know exactly how much there is in both sales and production quantity. As far as the consumer goes, they now aren't a social drain but a social benefit. 2.9% collected, 1.1 million last year. Last month was $100,000 in one month off of one industry employing 1,000 people. I'd say we're primary employers as well. That collectively, 86 small businesses hire contractors, architects, electricians, employees who conduct this commerce in a legal way and pay taxes. And we get an additional 1.5%. We could expect anywhere from $3 to $4.5 million in annual collections in Colorado Springs off of this novice industry. If you tell me one other industry, I could ask the Regional Business Alliance, that has grown 39% year-end over year-end. And now we're going to capture the majority of that illegal transaction and bring it into a legitimate marketplace. It will be a phenomenal boon to our local governments so that we can fund the Enforcement Division, fund our firefighters, and fund our police who are needing pay raises right now.
I am sorry, Mark. You're out of time.
Get rid of those guys.
Yeah, thanks. Mark, thank you for being here, and I--
Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it. It's going to be a long night, so hang in there. Thank you.
I want to say thank you to all the individuals and groups-- It really has been helpful to hear from the different organizations, the different viewpoints. But next, we will move on to hearing directly from the citizens. Before we do that, we are going to take a break for, I would say, probably about 20 minutes? Is that enough?